What's up everybody? Welcome to Draft Chaff. This is episode number 46. My name is Zach. I'm one of your hosts and joining me as per usual, Ben Fisher. How goes?
First of all, may the fourth be with you, or rather, may the seventh, or eighth, or ninth, or 10th, or whenever you happen to be listening to, to the listener. May 4th was a little while ago, but of course it was Star Wars Day and some people might know this, but Zach and I got our start as Star Wars nerds. I remember many good times of basically 24 hours Star Wars, the Old Republic marathons.
Yeah, and not infrequently either. We did, we played that game way too much.
Oh, way too much. We were pretty good. I mean,
Yeah, like, like to the point where there was, this is a genuine, actual thing that happened. I'm not making this up. I stepped away while we were in the middle of, I don't know what we were doing, probably a bunch of raids and stuff. And I stepped away and as I stepped away, Ben texted me, he's like, I need, I'm going to track you down. And if you've ever played Stars of the Republic, the game is massive. There are multiple planets to be on. Each of those planets take like literal hours to cross the map on. And he found me like he actually, I was gone for like 20, not even 20 minutes and he found me. And he didn't know what planet I was on to start. He didn't know where on that planet I was. It was ridiculous.
Call it intuition. I was playing a bounty hunter, so it was kind of my thing.
Very on flavor.
Yeah.
That said, this week we are talking about Strixhaven sealed. The arena open is coming up and so we didn't get to do, we didn't have the time to do a sealed episode with the last sealed open. So we figured we'd give it a shot this time. We're going to just talk about all of our thoughts on sealed and what we think about Strixhaven in, in the context of sealed. As well as some highlights on what you can expect from the open as an event structure as well. Before we get into all that, we've got some housekeeping items, of course, the first of which is our Discord. If you're not in the Discord already, definitely check that out. The link to that is in the episode description as well as on our Twitter page. And that's the best place to go to chat with us outside of, you know, Twitter and things like that, or just listening to us on the show. We're pretty active in the Discord as well as the rest of our community. So that's a great place to be if you have any need for tips or suggestions on any given limited format, or you just want to chat. All things limited with like-minded individuals. That said, the show is brought to you by you via the Patreon. That's right. You can check out patreon.com/draftchaffpod to get info on how you can support us there. You've got five different tiers, starting from $2 a month up to $10 a month. And you can get things like stickers, access to the full show notes, custom deck building opportunities with us and access to uncut versions of the show. If you're into that sort of thing. If you're not, we'd ask you just share the show, send it out to people you love, send it out to people you hate and, you know, get some more ears on it as well. We also met our first Patreon goal. Meaning all of the episodes are now uploaded to YouTube at our YouTube channel. You can check out the link for that in the episode description. Until we hit so many subscribers, we, we don't have a personal link, but eventually that will be at draftchaffpod as well. I think that's it for our housekeeping items. Anything you want to add there, Ben?
Well, I do really enjoy having the video on. This means we get to be hams for the camera, get to like wave and give a little thumbs up everyone some while. Maybe I'll, I'll strike a pose every now and again, or maybe I, I'll have, I'll throw up like a pensive, like, like deep in thought face when we're talking about something. Essentially, I'm going to start emoting during the arena equivalent of emotes, except it's the real life version of that, which is just called facial expression. So for those of us that haven't seen other human faces in a long time, thanks to quarantine, you can come see our faces and maybe that'll be a nice change of pace.
Sure. Onto our crack and draft type thing. Ben, you've got a spicy one for us. Walk us through it.
Oh yeah. This is from a deck that I posted in the Discord a little while ago. It ended up going seven and two, but this was back in the draft portion of it. And I was trying to consider vector theory and how exactly it might play into this specific pick. So what we've got is first of all, a pack one, pick one. I took mascot exhibition. But this is nowhere near pack one, pick one. This is a pack three, pick, I think it was pack, pick four. Pack three, pick four. I don't know. I have to count the cards. I stole this from a 17 lands log and I forgot to screen cap the part that says what pick it is. So womp, womp, I'll find it later. But basically my deck is almost done. I've got multiple eye twitches to go get the mascot exhibition. I've got a few other little random like learn cards. I've got two field trips. I've got some other stuff floating around. This is a black green base. So I've got Dina sign and blood. A few cram sessions, a few infused vitality, quadrigs pledge mage, some other nonsense, umbrel juke, some moldering karox. Whatever. It's like a black green shell. That part isn't important. That's not really what I focus on here, but essentially like the black green shell is, is in place like this could be a fine black green deck, just kind of hard mid-range. I took some interesting cards, some unconventional picks that really paid off in this draft. Because of mascot exhibition, I took a team pennant, which doesn't tend to see too much play. It's the one drop artifact. It's the equipment you can, it gives plus one, plus one vigilance and trample, and you can equip for three or equip to a creature token for one. Now you might be wondering, what was I thinking? Well, I'm thinking if every single game I'm casting mascot exhibition turn like six, thanks to the, the field trips. Well then team pennant is probably going to have a pretty good impact. It's going to let my elementals go over the top of my opponent's four, four elementals or my three, or my three, two. Yeah, it makes a three, two. My three, two is be able to trade with like a four toughness creature. And the other key card that I want to talk about is biblioplex assistant, which I think gets much better when you actually have a spell that you want to get back from the graveyard. In this case mascot exhibition. So I guess I should actually talk about the pick. Now in the pack, we see cultivate deadly brew arcane subtraction, biblioplex assistant, cram session, cultivate. Expanded anatomy, and then a few red and white cards at the end that don't really matter. But honestly, any of those first bunch of cards. I guess arcane subtraction and cure rate a little less. So some other stuff, but cultivate deadly brew assistant and cram session and expanded anatomy. All potentially great pickups in this deck. What are you thinking when you see this pack?
Yeah. I mean, essentially I would think the first thing I'm thinking is to look at how cultivate fits in with this deck. You've got a couple of field trips already. So I don't know that the ramp is super necessary at this point and your top end is like basically cog work. You know, the, the six mana four, six or four, five, or whatever that is with.
Yeah, the archivists.
Right. So that's basically your top end outside of the, the exhibition. So that would lead me to think, you know, maybe we want deadly brew to kind of shore that up, but our two drops slot is pretty heavy already. Arcane subtraction would be nice because it's a learn card, which helps get your, your, the rest of your, your max, the mascot exhibition that much more reliably. Cram session as well. Solid, solid card. And we've seen that go up in a lot of pick orders as well. The life gains pretty relevant, learn also very relevant. But the assistant is a nice pickup, I think, because having extra flyers in this format can be pretty huge. And the fact that it gets back your exhibition and notably, you already have an assistant here. Yeah. In this deck. So this is your second assistant, which makes getting that effect much more reliable. And I, so I don't really dislike that. And it's not terrible from a curve consideration either. I think that's a fine pickup. I don't know that, that I would, I think I'd be between that and cram session here, to be honest.
Yeah, I could see taking cram session just as one extra learn card. I ended up calling this deck turbo exhibition. Because the goal of this deck is cast mascot exhibition as fast as possible. Makes you have it in your hand to cast it, of course. So I did end up main decking two cram sessions. I don't know if I would have played a third necessarily, because Yeah. Plus I have a few other lessons. Obviously you're pretty much always getting max mascot exhibition first. Unless you need, for example, an environmental sciences to, to go and grab the land. I did have a game where I end up using a cram session to go get a sciences to make my third land drop. Because I made that third land drop, I then survived long enough in the game to go learn again and get mascot exhibition later. If I had just gotten exhibition the first time, I probably would have just died with it stuck in hand. Now, I ended up taking the assistant here. And for similar reason to what you said, cultivate is a very, very, very strong magic card, especially in limited ramping and drawing you that extra land to play the next term. Super great, especially when you're trying to splash or do something weird. That being said, I think I would just take field trip over it, like any, any case. Unless I was already specifically splashing. I found field trip to be a stronger card in a vacuum.
I mean, the learn is just huge. It's just, it's just way too flexible.
Yeah. Turns out between ramping one and getting an extra card, turns out you'd often prefer that to be a card that affects the board in some way, not a land.
Right. Yeah. I mean, essentially field trip is, is cultivate with the added benefit of instead of drawing a land, you're drawing a real card.
Essentially, yeah. Deadly brew would be interesting here. I felt that I didn't have enough pests to make this worth it. In fact, I don't actually think I had any pests at this point. I had the eye twitches. And a cute play that I made a few times was opponents rarely block the eye twitch because you know, they don't want to give you that card. I would sometimes just sack the eye twitch to Dina for, just on my opponent's end step, go get mascot exhibition, untap mascot exhibition. So they don't even see it coming. Now, like I said, I took the assistant here and I took this considering vector theory. The plan of this deck has now become hyper focused. The direction of this deck is now one extremely niche direction, which is cast mascot exhibition as fast as possible. And then as many times as possible. So having that second assistant really did shore up that game plan. If I didn't have that assistant, my plan would have been so much less consistent. I would have had certain games where I cast mascot exhibition once, but then opponents might still recover from that. It can be beatable. Maybe just like a board wipe could happen, which did happen in one of my games that I ended up losing. I think the plan of casting mascot exhibition as many times as possible did end up being the right plan to go with for this specific deck. And the assistance really did pay off. They felt amazing in the deck, except for one specific scenario. Which it was the prismari dean. I think it's the red one. Is it Nisari?
Sure. I don't have the dean names memorized. Most of the rares, I don't have the names memorized.
Yeah, me too. It's kind of a weird effect. I've noticed this since we've started doing the podcast. I think because we're so much more hyper focused on like the, the set itself and like the cards themselves, I spend ironically less time learning the names of the cards themselves. Plus there's a lot of names in the set. The more legendary is that they've been starting to add, like those uncommon legendaries now. The harder I found it is to memorize all the names, but I had a game where my opponent did play the red dean. I believe it's Nisari. I don't know. I'll look it up. But it's like the five mana four, four, where at the beginning of your upkeep, you exile the top card of your each player's library and you can play those cards this turn. Well, biblioplex assistant puts mascot exhibition back on top of your library. So with that dean out on the battlefield, it is a very, very, very bad idea to put mascot exhibition on top. In fact, I once found myself sand like absolutely stuck in the, in this scenario. And there wasn't much I could do about it. I had to wait until I drew removal for the dean, but I eventually got it back. It's essentially a napcaster mage. What are you gonna, what are you gonna do?
Yeah. I mean, the thing is that's an incredibly niche answer to the game plan you have. And so if that's what you're worried about, you're probably fine. Like how many times are you going to run into that?
Believe it or not, it happened twice in my league.
I don't think I've seen that card played ever. Not that it's a bad card. It's just, it's a, what? I think that one's a mythic, isn't it?
I think it's a, it's a rare, but yeah. And the other side of it is pretty solid too. I mean, I trophy with the deck. I'm not going to complain. It was a fun time. Mascot exhibition is what you hope to see in your sealed pools this, this upcoming weekend.
All right. That brings us to our Tefery Tyble. If you're new to the show, this is the section of the show where Ben and I talk about our week, something good, something bad. Kind of just open up a little bit and get you all to know us a bit better. So Ben, kick us off with your Tefery Tyble.
Sure. So my Tefery this week, I've actually gotten to play a little bit of paper magic in school, believe it or not. So on my lunch break, instead of eating lunch, I'll go and I'll, I'll see one of the teachers. And sometimes we have a student or two that'll stay during lunch as well. And this guy is like a diehard magic player, like vintage legacy. He's got a, he's been a little bit out of it for a while, but he knows his stuff still. So, and he's got a huge collection of decks. And our goal is this year, obviously a little rough for having gatherings of students, but next year we're hoping to kind of kick off this trading card game club. It's just going to be a magic club, but we have to like lure them in with Yu-Gi-Oh. Cause that's, that's like more acceptable to the kids these days, whatever. But anyway, I don't know. We'll, we'll tell them there's Cody, Cody's a cute mascot, right? We'll be like, come look at, we got Cody here.
Love it.
Anywho, it was just a good experience playing some paper magic. But it's also utter nonsense because it's just, it is the most kitchen table fun you can get. For example, I accidentally brought my elf commander deck. I meant to bring a deck that I thought, but I forgot I swapped the deck boxes and the student was playing the mono red standard pre-con, which is solid. It's got an ember cleave. It's got bone crushers, all that stuff. And the other teacher was playing pauper blue, black control.
Love it.
So we had a pauper deck, a standard deck and a commander deck. I'll give you a wild guess as to which one.
Uh, I mean, I haven't seen your elf deck, but I wouldn't be surprised at the power level of a commander deck being able to, to beat those out, but I would hold out hope that the, the control deck would be able to take it.
You would think, but I managed to alt a tie varkell. Yeah. It turns out pauper tends to not be super good at dealing with planeswalkers. They don't really pack a lot of planeswalker answers these days. But anyway, that's been a great time and just a nice little reprieve from, from the nonsense of school, which is my Tyble. I am behind on lesson plans and despite having only around two months left. I've kind of exhausted all of the plans I've made in the past, things that I've had from student teaching or previous teaching experience. I kind of, I've, I've done them all. So at this point I'm in unshredted waters. Which is fun because it means I get to make up new and cool and exciting things. Also a little scary because I don't know if they're going to work and
Yeah, but aren't you supposed to be like into experiments or something? Like isn't that like part of the job description?
That's true. I enjoy experimenting as much as the next physicist. However, when it's on my students and the outcome of the experiment is their learning. I tend to play it a little safer than I would otherwise.
Oh, come on. If we didn't have that sort of situation happen, the prison, the Stanford prison experiment never would have happened.
Are you suggesting I recreate Stanford prison experiment?
Yeah, but with high schoolers.
What could go wrong?
No, I'm kidding. That was, that was a terrible abuse of power.
Not that I would ever abuse my power.
You've never once ever done that.
Altering a tie varkell against a high schooler. That's an abuse of power.
So for me, there are a couple of Teferies I have got this week. Of course I'm super pumped for the arena open, very, very excited to get my hands on that. I think I've got at least one free entry banked in gold and such. So might actually get a couple of runs this weekend. Going to be streaming that. So come hang out. If you have managed to hear this episode prior to, to the stream, that'll be Saturday at, I think I'm doing that at 10:30 Eastern in the morning. So check that out if you're interested. I also started selling some of my cards, which is fun. Kind of nice to get out, get, get that out of there and, and get, get my closets cleaned up and such. And actually I have a quick little shout out for, I'll call it a company, but I'm pretty sure it's run by just one, one individual. Called shipping shields. They're essentially a completely green alternative to top loaders. And they're fantastic. They're really sturdy. Yeah. They're basically just made of cardboard, but they're very, very sturdy. They seem great. And obviously since they're made of cardboard, they're far more recyclable than, than the top loaders and such. So very cool. Thanks for the product and they're really cheap too. They're also cheaper than top loaders. So check out shipping shields on Twitter and Facebook and such. Great person to work with too. So that was great. Also in the Tefery realm on, on the, the context of playing paper magic, got to play some commander with some of the Discord folks this week, last week. And that was awesome. It was a blast. I got to run the Ozgear lower hold legacies, pre-con, no changes. I just wanted to see what it did. And it did, it did pretty well. I'll admit it. I had a point where I nearly killed them all with a steel helicite pretty early in the game and then a board wipe ruined that. And actually it was a board wipe that exiled all my stuff. So Ozgear couldn't even get them back, which was kind of sad. There's some really good cards in that pre-con and I'm looking forward to, to spicing it up a little bit.
Got to know who won though. Not that it matters, but you know, who won?
Can I even remember who won? I think, I think it was, I think it might've been Andy. I honestly don't remember. Sorry guys. I, it was pretty close though. We had, we had, I think Hulu was playing coma. Or something close to coma. It was very, no, it wasn't coma. It was AC. Yeah. And then we had a, a demir rogues deck. And OD was playing a demir rogues deck. And then Andy was playing a madness kind of discarded deck. It was pretty good.
Well, if it was the kind of game where you don't even remember who won, because it like didn't even really matter. Also, it sounds like, it sounds like a green is criminally underrepresented at that table or only a
That's fair. Yeah.
Next time I'll have to hop in and reset the scales, get a nice balance.
Sounds good. My tip of this week is that I sold my car and I'm a big car guy and I'm very sad. It was 2010 Mustang GT. And very, very sad to see her go. She will be missed, but I think we have better plans for the money there. So and I made back just about what I sold, what I bought it for. So that is, that can't go wrong there.
Yeah. Good value.
All right. Onto our listener question of the week. This week we have a question by Gus WF in the Discord. Says, guys, I have a theory of how Strixhaven was built. Silver quill beats ramp decks, ramp decks outvalue mid-range and mid-range beats silver quill. I think the colleges have a bit of a rock, paper, scissors dynamic. Anybody else feel that? Yeah. I think in general, this is, this tends to be pretty, I think by design. In, in most formats, you have this sort of rock, paper, scissors thing going on where there should be some sort of aggro beats mid-range beats control, beats aggro. And it kind of cycles that way, but I think they did an excellent job this, this time around with the colleges actually being able to counter each other pretty well.
I think you said it backwards, but like the aggro beats control beats mid-range beats aggro.
Yes.
But the same idea. Yeah. Personally, I like that we have a format with this kind of nice meta game balance. Compare it to Kalheim where you had the two extreme ends of the spectrum and they were kind of it. I know, I know, like everything, there, there was some in-between playables when the stars aligned, but it's like a good snow deck, a good late game control snow deck was just going to win every single game if it had the right pieces that just kind of, it snapped up during drafts because nobody else wanted it. And then all the mid-range decks will have to fight over the nonsense. Well, sometimes the aggro decks could even just outpace the mid-range decks. So I have been much more preferring this kind of balanced meta game. I also love lesson learned.
Oh, it's fantastic.
Like I've always loved playing with a wishboard. In fact, those that watched me play the last standard qualifier weekend know that I'm a little bit too fond of playing decks of, with fae wishes in them. Even when it might not be the best meta game call. I probably should have just played salt by ultimatum that weekend, whatever. But this feels like playing a wishboard in every single deck, which is amazing. And having that be a draftable experience. Being like, oh, well, I, I kind of want that introduction to annihilation, just so that I can pick off that one thing. And then the payoff of your opponent resolves a finale, the, what is it dramatic finale? That's what it's called. And then you're like, oh my God, I can't beat that. But wait a minute, I can, because I have introduction to annihilation, sideboard or something like that, or is that when only creatures? I forget. You all get the, the idea that I'm going for. Having a hyper niche answer to anything that could come up, or having just a situational card is so good. The secret is out at this point about environmental sciences that you should just have one in every single draft deck you have.
Just going to go on record and say, I totally called that.
You did.
I was very high on that card before the set came out.
100% call it. You're much higher than I was. I was wrong. I undervalued it by quite a bit. I looked at it like two mana for that effect. Like it turns out this format is slow enough where you sometimes have time, if you miss your third land drop and you spend your second, like your turn three, like learning to go get that instead and like casting it on, on turn three. You can catch up and that feels really, really great. The ability to kind of mitigate that, that, that loss of land drop with this niche answer. It feels good when you get paid off for your smart draft picks. That's like why drafting is fun, right?
Yeah. There's actually a couple of things there too. I mean, one of the things I think makes environmental sciences good enough to be, well, as good as it is. Is that a lot of the learn cards are defensive spells. You got things like hunt the specimens, which drops creatures in the way to block that you actually want to die in the first place. So that gives you the time to actually get the environmental sciences, cast it and play the land. You have things like arcane subtraction, you know, a number of these spells, study break are very defensive oriented. And so it lets you take, like it lets you take the time to actually cast environmental sciences. So that extra mana isn't really the end of the world. Also the fact that you don't need to draw it when you don't want to is very, very huge because it's not part of your deck. And so, you know, all these things to say that, yeah, I think this was a perfect environment for something like this. And I think it also did something minor or maybe major from a design perspective in that, you know, one of the things that magic has to have because of the way that packs work is commons, right? You have to have cards that are more easy to get because you need cards that are less easy to get so that you can have these packs and make the whole like pseudo lottery system with, with opening packs. And that's fine. But we get to use those to our advantage in limited because they're the bread and butter of limited. And that's also fine. But what they've done here is taken cards that are typically not playable in limited. So like the worst of the worst cards and made them very playable by stapling a very reasonable effect onto them. And I think that's actually pretty awesome. That, that opens up some design space in the future where they can just say like, yeah, this card's probably not supposed to be playable in limited because it's just garbage. Well, let's throw some shenanigans like this on it and let you draw a card or whatever.
I should note that I've been using study break is more of an aggressive card.
Sure.
In aggressive or white decks. And it pairs pretty well with other, other ones like that. Some, some of the cheaper ones I find can be pretty strong on aggressive decks. Obviously enthusiastic study is just an all-star. Love that card. Who would have thought I'd say I love a three mana combat trick? What? It's barely even a combat trick. It's just a pump spell, a good three mana pump spell that draws a card. Wow. Who would have thought? And academic dispute is, it's not quite lightning bolt, but it sometimes feels like it when you played an attacker for, say like turn two or turn three. Now, anyway, speaking of, of these, you know, the one time when it, when you can't actually pick which lesson and learn cards you wind up with?
It's sealed. Yeah, that's true. And speaking of, let's get right into that. Our main topic here is Strixhaven sealed, a little bit of a study session for you. Before we get into any of the specific details regarding Strixhaven, if you're new to limited or you're new to sealed, first of all, welcome, happy to have you. Second of all, you might be wondering what actually is sealed. So to break it down, sealed is a limited format in magic. Where you have a 40 card deck, just like draft. The difference is you don't draft the cards that you put in your deck. Instead you open six packs. And those are the cards you have to build with. Typically that makes sealed a bit slower, less synergized. You don't have the, the benefit of being able to select the individual cards you want for your deck as they pass around the table. So your decks tend to be a little bit less synergized. And since Strixhaven has been a relatively synergistic format overall, this can lead to some pools being wildly powerful, while others are just kind of falling short because you open cards from too many different colleges that don't work together. So you're really hoping that you open a lot of cards that are in the same college, whether it's a quote unquote bad college. And actually in this set, we don't really have one of those. They're all quite good when they're supported well. So you really just want to hope to open a bunch of multicolored cards and, you know, mono colored cards that are in the same college or fit in the same college. So that's kind of a quick, very, very quick drive-by of what sealed looks like. We're going to talk about the sealed, the, the arena open in a little bit, but first we're going to walk through some more big picture stuff and some deck building tips for sealed decks. And then we'll get into the arena open.
So on the topic of more big picture approach, first of all, shout out to Hulu who recommended a great article in our Discord. It's still linked in there. If anybody wants it, we can pin it. It was an article from a few years ago by Pascal Viren, who I hadn't heard of before, but I really liked this article. And I particularly liked the four questions that he suggests asking before playing any given sealed format. And we are going to do our best to answer them for you. Of course, you know, it's also good to answer them for yourself. Better to teach a man to fish than to give a man a fish, right? But I also personally believe that it's easier to teach a man of how to fish when he's already eating a fish and gets to see how good the fish. when he's already eating a fish and gets to see how good the fish tastes. So, uh, e- easier to teach someone who's
That almost makes sense.
Trust me, there's something deep and profound in there if you think about it enough. First of all, uh, how many turns do I expect the game in a given format to last? And, uh, what tends to end games in that given format? So I want you to close your eyes and think of the last game of Strix Haven that you played. How did it end? I know how my last game ended. Uh, I got attacked for lethal by two big flyers. So, uh, they both had like over four toughness and I had a bunch of little dorks on the ground. It was like turn 10, I think. Huh. That's interesting. So that means that, I mean, that those, those flyers have been pumped by pump spells even. So this tells us that the games can go kind of long. You can play early drops, but they tend to stick around sometimes. Um, things do tend to trade. The, the board was pretty empty. Removal is pretty strong in this format too. And overall, this, uh, this set does lend itself to later games. Multiple decks, as we have discussed, have the game plan, the direction, if you incorporate a little vector theory. The direction of many of these, uh, decks tends to be going towards the late game. In fact, blue green even wants to hit its eighth land drop. That's about the speed of the format. Blue red wants to cast eight drop spells coincidentally. So decks are probably going to want to go to the late game. Red, white, funnily enough, has a late game like value engine subtype. If you happen to open a sealed pool with a few quintorious or something like that. Or you could just go the classic like one drop, two drop, three drop, pump spell, pump spell. Really prey on the people that are trying to go super over the top. So next up, um, are early drops relevant? And is it important to do something on turns one or two or I guess threes, there's really no format when you don't want to do something by turn three. But is it crucial to have a one or two drop in this format? I say no.
Yeah, it's weird because I would say that there are two different answers to these two questions you just asked. The first question was, are early drops relevant? I think the answer to that is yes. There are some early drops that are relevant. Things like unwilling ingredient tend to be pretty relevant, especially in the decks that care about them. Is it important to do something in the early turns? No, I don't think so. I think most of the time, unless your deck cares very specifically about those early drops, things like I said, unwilling ingredient, hunt the specimens in a wither bloom deck that really wants to get this value engine going. A lot of times you don't really care if you don't do anything until turn three.
Yeah. I'm picturing like, I don't know, there's some prismari decks where they could play a, uh, a, a quadrix pledge mage on turn three and then just have like a heated debate and like, uh, a, a copy spell in hand. They're, they're fine. They're going to make it to late game. Chances are they can stabilize and deal with whatever the other opponent has got at them. But I don't know, there certainly starts where your opponent goes like Hallmanner into a two drop. You're like, uh-oh. I'm on the draw, right? And you get a little nervous. So I would say you do want to play a two drop still. I, I, you, but I don't think you should necessarily mulligan a hand with a, a solid deck that doesn't have a two drop. It's not like
This is an M21. Yeah.
Where you want your one drop and your two drop and your three drop, and you want all of them to be above rate. Yeah. Uh, I, I like your answer to this one. Next, uh, the third question he suggests we ask are, is, uh, are there enough ways to keep spending mana in this format? Yes.
Yes, absolutely. In a format where a two mana looter is not something you want, there are ways to spend your mana. Yeah.
Now, the second half of this question i- is an interesting one. Do play, both players usually cast all their cards or does the game usually end with cards left in hand? Funnily enough, I think there are usually ways to keep spending mana, but the game usually ends with one or zero, between zero and two cards in hand per player. The only way that tends to not is if one of the players is playing a very, very different game plan than the other, whether it's hyper aggressive or they missed a bunch of early land drops or something like that.
Yeah. And this is a little bit of a function of the extra card draw in this format, learn being one of those ways. There are just a lot of ways to get cards and then there are also a lot of ways to dump mana into things. So kind of the answer is yes to both. Like there are a lot of ways to spend mana and sometimes people end up with cards in their hand, but a lot of time I've found these games tend to go to some form of attrition, whether it's just cards in hand or board states or whatever.
Yeah. If I have like a, a late game field trip, I'll just go grab a fractal summoning. I'll like pass the turn. The next turn I'll tap out for a huge fractal summoning.
Right.
Uh, and then like, I guess I don't have any cards in hand anymore, but then the next turn I tapped like another learned card and then I do it again. So.
Well, then you have campuses scrying you cards. So like, yeah.
Yeah. Games tend to kind of stall out like that. So I'd say, but usually ending the game between like one and zero. Also, I don't tend to sandbag a land in this format because of campuses and because there's a few like huge pump effects. There's also a bunch of X spells. Those tend to be at higher rarity.
Almost always the only times I sandbag are if I'm past eight lands.
Yeah. Uh, if you're holding up a land, you really should ask yourself what kind of value you're actually getting from that land. Chances are there's something in your deck that could capitalize on you having more mana. For example, like if you have that exact play I just mentioned, field trip into fractal summoning. Uh, maybe you really need to do both in the same term. And playing that land the last turn might be the difference between a four, four and a five, five, which in this format is enormous. Four fours, uh, get blown up by heated debate and they trade with elementals. Uh, whereas five fives pretty much stabilize the board against everything but a weighted moon pledge mage, right? So I would say tend to play out that last land, um, tend to finish with no cards in hand at the end of a turn.
A caveat to that is if you have a lot of learn cards, but not a lot of lessons, you may want to sandbag the land. So you have something to rummage, but.
Good point. And last but not least, the fourth question, what is the average size of a creature? Does average, uh, does the average creature tend to have more power or toughness? This is a funky question. What would you say the average size of a creature is in this format? I, I, I say this, uh, knowing full well that our good friends at 17 lands could probably just run that number in like a heartbeat, right?
Yeah, I think I would say it's probably middle of the, middle ground. I think three, three's a pretty good sweet spot. If you can hit four of anything, whether it's power or toughness, you're in a great spot because there are a handful of creatures with four toughness and they're handful with four. And that's why cogwork, um, what's, what's the, the cogwork archivist? Thank you. I always want to say cogwork assistant, but I'm mixing the biblioplex one. But the cogwork archivist is so powerful because it has a high enough toughness that it blocks just about everything. But it has four power, which is huge because a lot of the flyers in the format, uh, can get to four toughness pretty easily.
Yeah. Um, I, I'm curious what the actual like numerical value of average creature size in this format is. I don't know. I feel like I see two power quite often, uh, three power quite often. So it's somewhere in there, but even those decks that they tend to be slower. So I, I would say, I, I think one example of, uh, where this question would become more immediately apparent is M21 where, uh, there's multiple three power two drops in like m- most colors.
Right, right.
Or other things like that, like two mana, three ones. I don't think there's a single two mana, three one in the set, is there?
There is one, but I can't recall what it's called off the top of my head.
There's prismari apprentice, which is, is the defender version.
Yeah, that's a three, three. There is actually a three, one in white that I can't remember what it's called, but.
There's the one, three rare flying. Is that a three one?
Yeah, there's, there's a three one. I can't remember what it's called, but, uh, I'll let you know after the show. There, uh, there is, there are three mana, three twos in spirits, uh, spirit summoning, but, um, yeah, typically creatures are a bit bigger this format. Um, and even the smaller creatures still tend to stick around for the late game. It's definitely, uh, and the, the, the kind of the point of this question is to try to figure out, you know, how trades should be working, what you should be valuing as far as power toughness goes and what's the speed of the format? And I think we're, we're all pretty hand, all of these questions so far have lent themselves to telling us this is a pretty slow format.
I will say flyers tend to be pretty strong in this type of format, uh, especially when your opponent's not prepared for them. That means you should either be packing flyers or hate to say, but get those scurried colonies ready, uh, because flyers are a good way to end the game against someone that's unprepared for them. Now, last thing before Zach jumps into some more specific deck building tips, uh, kind of big picture stuff. Try vector theory. Try breaking it out as you look at your sealed pool. So sealed's biggest difference between, uh, it and drafts is that you get to see all of your cards at once. You know already what your uh, sample is going to be, what you get to make your deck out of. Unlike drafts where it could go multiple different directions and, uh, your choices actively influence it. Sealed is easy. Uh, it just kind of gives it to you all at once, but that prevents, uh, that presents different types of challenges. So the first thing you want to do when you look at your sealed pool is look at which of your cards have the strongest individual longest, uh, and strongest vector arrows and see what direction that they're pointing. For example, did you open professor onyx, a card that I still haven't gotten the chance to play with? And I'm really hoping that, uh, it, it, it happens. I think I've done like over 40 drafts so far, and I still haven't seen a professor onyx. Oh, well. I guess it doesn't get passed very often, does it?
Shouldn't.
Maybe I'll, I'll happen to, well, all right, knock on wood. Going to get one this weekend. So maybe you happen to have a professor onyx in your sealed pool. That is a bomb card. However, you have to get to turn six to cast it. So you want to try to build a deck that does that. Now you can't just look at your mythics and, and that kind of thing. You gotta look at your commons and uncommons too. And I guess your rares, whatever. You gotta make sure that they're all conducive to that same game plan. For example, um, if you try to jam approach of the second sun into a hyper aggressive red, white deck, I guess it works, but like you might just rather have a pump spell at some point, right?
Yeah. Kind of going against the grain there. And that, that, that's kind of what we were talking about earlier when I was saying that the the, the over, the average sealed deck tends to be less synergistic and a bit slower, less powerful than the average draft deck of the same format because you don't get to finely tune that deck as you go along through the draft. You're just given a bunch of cards and they might work together, they might not.
I once had a sealed deck a long time ago where I just didn't have any two drops. Like I think I had like three, two drops overall, and they were across like colors that were otherwise unsupported. It's like, all right, what are you going to do? In this case, I actually like that there's a good number of playable colorless cards. Maybe that'll kind of shore this up. But anyway, look at the direction of the strongest cards in your pool and, uh, see what that direction points you towards. And it's kind of like a, a mid-max equation, right? You want to find the ideal balance between, uh, some of your longest and strongest vector cards. Uh, and then balancing that with support from direction, uh, from, from all your commons and uncommons. And also, uh, feel free to hit us up on the Discord and, and post your pool. I'm sure this weekend the Discord is going to be absolutely popping off. Uh, I try my best to keep up with all my, all the messages a- at school, but, uh, this weekend I have a, I'm going to, uh, I don't know, maybe I'll take a break from lesson playing and just like hyper focus on the Discord and just answer as many questions about sealed as I can.
Yeah. And I'll be live. So come hang out and we'll talk about things on the stream as well. All right. So that said, let's get into some deck building tips. Also real quick, if you haven't heard vector theory and Ben, we've mentioned it a couple of times this episode. If you don't know what we're talking about, that's because we kind of made it up. So check out our last episode, episode 45 to figure out the details on vector theory. And we'll be doing more on that in the future as well.
For sure.
Okay. Deck building tips. First of all, I would suggest you sort by color and rarity. You open six packs. So you've got a ton of information there and it's very easy to get kind of decision paralysis. I like to sort by color to see how many cards of a particular color we have. It's very easy to tell right off the bat when you do that, whether or not a color is going to be supported. If you have like, for some reason you opened like four or five cards in one color, that really shouldn't happen. But if it happens to happen, uh, then you can pretty much write that color off. Maybe you're going to splash a rare or something, but you can probably just ignore it. And that narrows down the decisions you have to make throughout the, the process of deck building. The other thing you want to sort by is rarity. Typically, as Ben was mentioning, those powerful rares and mythics are going to be, your bombs are going to be the cards that you really want to drive your initial thought process on how you're going to build your deck. Doesn't necessarily mean you're going to end up in those colors, but it's a great starting point, kind of a springboard to get you going with, uh, you know, the most powerful cards that you have available. So check for rares that would drive you to play certain colors. Typically it's a good starting point to build your deck, starting with those colors that you happen to have the most cards in. As I mentioned, you can write off the cards, the, the colors that you have the least colors in at least to start. And in Strix Haven sealed specifically, learn cards should drive your colors just as powerfully, if not more powerfully than the rares and the mythics. As we mentioned, lesson learned is super powerful in draft and it's equally as powerful in sealed. The question being which learn cards are you opening, which lesson cards are you opening? So take a look at those right off the bat because that's going to be a huge deciding factor on, well, all of my learn cards are in green. I'm going to try pretty hard to make green work.
The one kind of awkward thing about this format is you really want environmental sciences in your sideboard. Uh, it's, it's like the, the, the big few colorless ones. You really want just one of each of. Prophecy, uh, annihilation, uh, sciences.
Mascot exhibition.
All right. If you happen to wind up with one of those, yeah, that, that's just an average pool, I'm sure. But, uh, I guess you just gotta kind of hope that you land on the side of having a, a, environmental sciences. I mean, it's possible to build a deck that doesn't have lesson learned, but.
But it's generally going to be way weaker than the decks that do have it.
Your opponents will be just drawing more cards than you, and that tends to not work out super well. Now, another thing that we should mention is that you're getting additional cards in the mystical archives. Uh, and I noticed in arena, when you open a sealed pool, it still just shows you six cards, uh, like six rares or mythic. You might have 12 rares in your sealed pool and it's not going to show you all those. So, uh, once you're done opening the packs, I recommend sorting by rares and mythics. Just pull up a little sorter, search for, filter for rares and mythics, and then take a look at what you got there. You might find that you've got like a mystics master that didn't show up in, in the little preview screen. So don't get too sold on that. I wonder if there's an algorithm that picks which ones it shows. No idea.
Yeah, I think it just shows what, what is technically the rare slot because the mystical archives are like extra.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto number two for deck building tips. This is, don't be afraid to play big dumb creatures. In a format that is almost by design slower and like we said, less synergistic overall, these big dumb creatures that you typically wouldn't want in a draft deck, something like spined Karok actually turns out to be kind of decent in these formats because, well, you want to be going long anyway and they actually do a better job of doing that in this, in a slower environment than they would in the typical draft format. So just because it's less ideal, just because a card is less than ideal in draft, doesn't make it bad in sealed. Give it a look. At least give them considerations because there are going to be situations where you either don't have enough playables in a particular color as far as draft is concerned. Uh, so you might have to play them, but a lot of them are actually just perfectly serviceable.
Yeah. Sealed gives you the chance to build a good curve. And sometimes you just, you need a three drop and that spine Karok, it's like, ah, I don't like it, but I need to make it to the late game. Now, something I, I was considering, it seems, I don't know. It, it, it seems like red, white can actually keep up with the late game decks in draft. And those are like good late game decks. We're talking like people whose game plan it is to cast magma opus. Sometimes they just die, uh, to an aggressive red, white start. So that makes me wonder if there will be certain sealed pools where you could just have a really aggressive start. If you go star pupil into, uh, two drop into, uh,
Like lower hold pledge mage.
Or yeah, lower hold pledge mage or something like that. I think there could be these busted starts. Uh, I think it's not going to be common. I think you'll need a very specific pool for this, but I can see it happening. Now, now that tends to not be the case in a lot of sealed formats because people are playing their, their big bombs and their big mythics. The mythics don't tend to be two drops most of the time. They tend to be like the five drop planeswalker or the, the six drop colorless mythic or, uh, whatever else it may have you. You tend to want to cast your big best cards and that is more conducive to a longer game where you draw more cards, you see more cards and you buy time for you to cast those big haymakers. So playing a bunch of little common one ones tends to not be a super great plan in a lot of other formats because yeah, you might've gotten in for 10 damage, but then your opponent just landed a vivian and then you're like, uh-oh, now what? In this format, I don't know. I think there might be these more aggressive decks that like, I could see aggressive silver quill decks that just overrun even the people that have these stacked, uh, quadrix decks full of rares and mythics and whatnot, just because the set was built for it to do that. I think, uh, it was built with, uh, this in mind to be able to either have the late game quintorious plan or have the early game, uh, pledge mage, uh, academic dispute, you, you take like six, go, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And that's actually point number three here. If your pool looks to support it, try out an aggressive build. These tight, low to the ground aggressive decks can be super useful in sealed, especially where most other decks are doing these dirtly things, not really expecting to do, to be attacked aggressively in the beginning of the, of the game. And they're kind of hoping to stick to the late game. If you have a pool that supports being super aggressive, you might have a star pupil, a couple of lumamancers, a bunch of combat spells. You know, you get a handful of enthusiastic studies. You're off to the races, maybe a twin scroll shaman. You can really do some damage pretty quickly and I've seen in draft, I've seen decks that can randomly OTK you, like just out of nowhere, you're just dead in one turn from 20. It's like, oh, uh, okay, I guess that's a thing that can happen. So if your sealed pool seems to support it, try it out. If it doesn't look like it's going to get there, don't force it, because it's not gonna work.
You have like a blade historian? Ooh, man, that thing is, that thing is nasty. I've seen it as you work in standard, like if it's, if it tends to be, if a card breaks in a standard play in the first few weeks after it's printed, probably pretty good in, in whatever limited format it's gonna be in. Turns out giving everything that attacks double strike is just great.
Yeah. Also worth noting, before we go on to our next point here, one thing to keep in mind, and I think this is mentioned in the, the article we referenced earlier by Pascal Verin, sealed decks don't look like draft decks most often. Like oftentimes they just look very different. So we have this tendency, I think, coming from a more draft oriented background to look at a, a sealed deck and think, well, this is a bad draft deck. So it's probably a bad sealed deck as well. And that's just not always the case. So have an open mind, keep, keep, you know, you only have your pool to work with. So make it, make the best of it that you can. Don't necessarily write off a build, because it looks like a bad draft deck.
For example, my carable looking Kalheim deck ended up being pretty good in, in, in sealed.
Well, that's because black white was the best for, best archetype in that format, so.
Uh huh, yeah, something like that.
Uh, alright, on to point number four here for our deck building tips. Unless you have a very, and I mean very clear build, like all your color, cards are the same two colors. Try out multiple builds with your pool, especially in the arena open. You're not tied to a specific time limit for deck building. You can take all the time you need basically, as long as the, the actual amount of time to get your matches in allows for it. So take advantage of the time you have to build your deck, explore all the options you have. And in fact, I would recommend using a tool like sealeddeck.tech. You can check that out, just type that into your browser, sealeddeck.tech to build your, your sealed pool. It gives you a bit more of like an MTGO sort of, uh, look and layout to the deck builder. And I find that a bit easier to use and more accessible, I would say, than Arena's, uh, deck builder. The interface is just nicer for it, but try whatever makes you feel comfortable. I would just heavily suggest that you try more than one build, because just because something looks to be the best build, uh, first glance might not always be, and taking the time to explore those options is gonna be huge.
Now, uh, we're not directly affiliated with sealeddeck.tech, but you, they did adopt your lesson plan terminology.
They did, and I was so excited. The funny thing is, because they don't follow me, I don't know how they found that tweet. They didn't like it, they didn't, they don't follow me, so I, I don't know where that came from, but they, what Ben's referring to is, is the Twitter for sealeddeck.tech tweeted out that they added a feature to filter by lessons in the sideboard, because they have a bunch of sideboard filter options that let you, you know, filter your deck, uh, or filter your sideboard, rather. And in limited formats, that's huge, especially with sealed, because your sideboard is huge. And so they were saying they added a feature for the lesson, uh, to filter by lessons and they actually shouted me out as popularizing, or trying to popularize, I should say, the term lesson plan instead of lesson board for, uh, the, the sideboard, including your lessons, so.
It does just make sense. People should be saying it more often.
I'm really, really still surprised that nobody, like none of the bigger content creators mentioned that earlier.
Yeah. Now, uh, one other recommendation, if you want to get some practice games with your sealed deck, I can guarantee you that there'll be other people in the Discord that are interested.
Absolutely.
Like Saturday morning's gonna come around, everyone's gonna crack their builds. They're gonna make a deck using sealeddeck.tech, using lesson board or lesson plan, I guess, if you say so. And then they're gonna be like, hey, I wonder if this deck is good. I wish I could try it out before I, uh, you know, take it into the open. Well, guess what? Like 20 other people are gonna be doing the exact same thing at the same time as you. So I think we could probably, uh, we should do a little bit of updating of our, of our channels and the, and the podcast. But I think we could probably make one specifically just for practice for sealed deck.
Yeah, totally open to that. Alright, so we've talked about sealed in general, we've talked about some strict saving related features of sealed. The point being, if you're not familiar with this yet, hopefully you're listening to this on Friday or early on Saturday as, as it releases. But there is an open tournament this weekend and an open tournament is one where there's no qualification to enter. Anybody can enter it. And in this particular instance, it is an arena open, so it's on arena, MTG arena, and it is sealed, uh, strict saving sealed. So let's talk about some of the details of the open, just so that you have everything in mind when you're going to open your pools and build your decks and figure out when you're even gonna play your matches and all that kind of stuff. So it's a two day format, a two day event, rather, assuming you make day two. So you do have to hit a certain record in order to make day two. Day one though, is either best of one or best of three, you get to choose. And you can enter as many times as you want. You get a new sealed pool every time you enter. So if you lose immediately, you're welcome to start again and, and try again. The win-loss records for best of one are seven wins or three losses is, is the way that that works. So you either hit seven wins before you hit three losses, or you hit three losses before seven wins and you're out. For best of three, it's four match wins. So you play best of three matches. Four match wins or one match loss, which means in best of three, you are not allowed a match loss if you hope to make day two.
Yikes.
Yeah, not the easiest thing in the world. The starts, the start time for the event is May 8th, which is this Saturday at 6:00 AM Pacific time. So you can do the conversions on that, uh, as depending on, on your time zone. The signups for that end May 9th, which is the follow, like that Sunday at 3:00 AM Pacific. So this is actually a longer signup window than we're used to. That said, the first day, quote unquote, like day one event ends May 9th at 6:00 AM PT. So if you do sign up at that, that last, like basically last minute, you'll have about three hours to get your games in. And which is not easy to hit seven wins or four match wins in, in three hours, especially in a late game format like this. And it'll probably be hard to find matches, because I imagine most people will have already wrapped up their day one as well. That said, uh, the entry for this event is either gold or gems. You can pay with either. For gold, it's 22,500 gold. For gems, it's 4,500 gems. So if you feel the need, do the conversion on that to see what that is in, in your local currency. But that's the entry cost. And then we've got some rewards to talk about. And the reward structure for day one is separate between best of one and best of three. They have two different reward structures, I think, to try to adjust for the difficulty of hitting day two with both. But essentially in best of one, zero to two wins, you get nothing. You just, uh, you know, try again, I guess. Three wins gets you 400 gems, four wins 800, five wins gets you 1,200 gems, six wins 1,600 gems. And seven wins gets you 2,000 gems, a card sleeve and qualification for day two. So not a great return on investment as far as hitting that trophy for the best of one series.
Don't even make back what you put in.
You don't make back what you put in, but you do qualify for day two and you get a sleeve.
That's something, I guess.
In best of three, uh, one match win gets you a thousand gems, two match wins get you 2,500 gems, three match wins get you 5,000 gems and fourth, four match wins get you 5,000 gems, the rowing card sleeve and qualification for day two. So in best of three, you get the same gem payout for three match wins or four match wins, but you only get the qualification on either best of one or best of three by going all the way and getting those full four match wins or seven game wins, depending on the format. Okay, so great, that's day one. If you manage to make it all the way to the end and you make to day two, you get that qualification token. Day two is best of three only, so keep that in mind. You are going to want to consider, uh, you know, sideboarding options and such for day two. However, it's not four or one for match wins and losses, it is actually seven or two. So you can go seven match wins or two match losses for best, best of three on day two. So it's a lot longer of an, of an event on day two, if you make it that, that far. That starts at May 9th, which is Sunday at 6:00 AM Pacific. Signups end, uh, May 9th at 8:00 PM. Oh no, actually, signups end at 8:00 AM Pacific, so you have a two hour window to sign up, which is not a lot. But you know, if you make day two, I'm sure that'll be high on your priority list for the day. And then of course, we have one set of rewards for this, because we don't have the best of one, best of three breakdown. So rewards for day two are as follows. Zero wins get you nothing, so you just get your whatever rewards you got from day one. One win gets you 2,000 gems, two wins get you 4,000, three wins get you 6,000 gems, four wins. Yep, four wins get you 10,000 gems, five wins get you 20,000 gems. And here are the big ones, six wins get you a thousand dollars USD, seven wins gets you $2,000 USD. So that's, that's where everybody wants to hit, of course, that, that nice, uh, we're just gonna have 14-0 the event, yeah? And, um, get ourselves that, a, a good 2K cash to, uh, go spend on more magic cards or something of that nature.
Of course.
So that's a breakdown. I know that's a lot of information. Feel free to, you know, rewind and all that stuff to hear those or just check out, um, the, the actual page for this on the wizard site. They have the breakdown for all of these details there as well. The big important stuff is to make sure you actually sign up by the deadlines for each of the days and to, uh, take all the stuff we talked about earlier, as far as building your sealed pool goes. As Ben mentioned, definitely check out the Discord for that. We're gonna have a ton of people, I'm sure, slinging their, their pools around and trying to get feedback on those that'll help, hopefully help everybody build their own pools better. I'll be streaming again at 10:30 AM Eastern Time on Saturday. So if you want to get advice from me while we're going through the building, I'm gonna be streaming the build process as well for my pools and we'll go from there. That said, uh, like I said, the Discord, you can check that out in the episode description, as well as on our Twitter page. And if you're interested in supporting the show, do check out our Patreon at patreon.com/draftchaffpod. We do have, I didn't mention this at the beginning of the show, but we do have a new goal, since we hit our first goal. And the new goal is, once we hit $75 a month total, we're going to open up our recording channel where Ben and I sit with video and audio to record the show. We're gonna open that up, uh, on a listener only perspective, so you won't be able to interact with us by voice, but you'll get to listen in live on the show as we record it with all the bloopers and behind the scenes and, and post credits and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So if that's something you're interested in and you want to support the show, go check out the Patreon, patreon.com/draftchaffpod. If you want to reach out to us directly outside of the Discord, you can do so on Twitter, at Ranik Alfredian for me, at BetaFish1 for Ben, or at DraftChaffPod for the podcast directly. And you can also email us at draftchaffpod@gmail.com. That's it for us. Good luck in the arena open and, uh, do share your sealed pools. Super excited to see what you guys come up with. Talk to you next week.
See you then, and, uh, hopefully none of us get matched against each other. So you know, it was May 4th.
Yes.
May the 4th be with you, of course. I, uh, I had a whole Star Wars themed astronomy class that day. I happened to be talking about, uh, the evolution of large scale structure in the universe. And I was, I happened to be focusing on star formation. Now, I, I started the class with, um, uh, the clip of Luke on Tatooine when he's watching the dual sunset, of course, iconic scene. One of my students, uh, goes like, whoa, who's that? He's cute. With like young Mark Hamill's on the screen. And I had to stop the video and, and berate her for a bit, like, oh my God, you don't know who Mark Hamill is? Are you serious? Like, any, any?
Yeah, that's, that's actually kind of mind blowing to me.
Uh, and I pulled up a current picture of him and she was like, oh, like what happened? It's movies for like 40 years.
Longer, it's like almost 50 years now.
Yeah, I guess so. Wow. But anyhow, I decided to have a poll in the class about what the best Star Wars movie is. Now, funnily enough, uh, in Google meets, you can only put 10 options, which isn't actually enough for all the Star Wars movies. So I just omitted episodes one and two from the poll, because if anyone was gonna say that was the best Star Wars movie, I wasn't really interested in their opinion.
Interesting. I mean, you could have just gone like strict main movies and then you'd only have nine to choose from.
I could have, but I think some of the best Star Wars content is the non-mainline stuff. So I, I opened it up from episodes three through nine, uh, and then I did Rogue One and Solo.
Okay. I think there's an argument to be made that you could have included the Clone Wars film, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, I also had some people saying that they're Mandalorian fans and that kind of thing, which I'd agree. People saying that, uh, one of my students had, uh, was like, had already watched Bad Batch, because she woke up at like six in the morning to watch it. I was like, alright, I can respect that, but, and she said it was great, but obviously I couldn't put that on there yet. Cause it's, I decided to stick with the movies.
Sure.
And I found some very surprising data.
Okay.
I found, uh, some people saying episodes four, five and six, going with the original trilogy was solid. Five, I think got the, the most out of those.
I would agree with that. Five was certainly the best.
You know what the winner was?
I'm gonna guess episode eight.
Believe it or not, it wasn't, although that would have been my vote. I love episode eight. I, I actually, I would have probably voted, I think objectively, the best Star Wars movie, I would probably say is Rogue One.
I agree, I agree.
From a standalone movie experience, I actually really like eight. I know that's gonna, that, that might ruffle some feathers out there.
We just lost like eight viewers.
Sorry, sorry folks.
Or listeners, I should say, but.
What can I say? Look, Ryan Johnson is a competent director. The casino scene is, didn't have to be there, I get it. Movie could have been an hour shorter, it would have been just as good, but like, it, it's a fitting send off for, for a famous character who I will not name. Actually, I guess there's a few of them in there, but anyway. Uh, believe it or not, episode three got the most votes.
I love that, because episode three, prior to the, prior to the sequel trilogy, you know, seven through nine, episode three was actually my favorite of the films.
Yeah.
So I, and followed very closely by five. So I actually really appreciate that. I think it's great that people said episode three, because I know a lot of actual like Star Wars fans really hated episode three. I didn't really see it. I mean, I saw a lot of the plot holes, but like the film was great. Like the, it was like the first, it was the first instance in Star Wars of the amazing like euphoria we got out of Rogue One, where like the actual tech was catching up with what should have been realized. Exactly, like the, the, the movie making tech was catching up to what we should have seen in, in the universe there.
Exactly. I think that's, that's one of the biggest payoffs for Star Wars. Like think of Mandalorian, where they finally got to show Boba Fett in his full glory, like doing actual things. Awesome, fantastic. But at first I was a little surprised, but then I realized, you know, these students are younger. A lot of them are, are like five, six, seven, how, how much are they? Hold on, how old am I? I guess they're like 10 years younger than me, right? So, um, when I think of episode three, I think, well, that was the one I kind of grew up watching. And you obviously the same, so, uh, that was kind of like, we were, we were at prime Star Wars demographic age when episode three was big, when it was like coming out. And like it was all the hype, it was McDonald's toys and everything. So it makes total sense that, that we just got bodied by the full force of episode three's amazingness. And of course, it has spawned so many memes and so many iconic moments. I am the Senate, like it's fantastic.
Only a Sith deals in absolutes.
I, I, I was talking to some people in my class about episode one and, uh, one of my students, who's another big Star Wars fan, who says he hates, uh, episode one and two, was saying, was saying, I think rightfully so, that the pod racing scene and the Darth Maul fight are really, really good.
Agreed. Yeah, Darth Maul fight was one of the best choreographed fight scenes of its time. Like it was, it was very, very well done.
Yeah, they, they don't get enough love. Uh, it's unfortunate they're surrounded by a movie with, uh, bad CGI fart jokes and trade politics. Because that's what everyone loves about Star Wars, right? But, uh, I don't know, I was happy with the youth. I, I, I think that the kids are alright if, uh, if they're, they're going with episode three. And then of course, the original trilogy too.